Good evening, everyone. Welcome to a special meeting of the City of Pierceau. It will be held today, Wednesday, September 19th. The time is 7:02. May I have a roll call, please?
Mary Mark.
Present.
Martha Peralio.
Present.
Richard Nanda.
Here.
Sonia Hernandez.
Here.
Brenda Trevino.
Here.
Julianna Hernandez.
Here.
Dan Frisco.
Here.
Alan.
Here.
We do have a call, so let us stand for our invocation as well as the pledge of allegiance. Mr. Mandrano?
Mr. Frosto, sorry.
As all my last in bold words. Heavenly Father, we come before you at this moment, mighty God, and thank you for all the wonderful blessings upon City of Pierceau, the community, the citizens, and, Lord, for your blessings upon the city council, the legislature, and for guidance, Lord, and for wisdom upon the lives of the and the spirituals of that, for our city manager, and everyone here this Saturday evening, Lord, in this meeting, Lord, we pray for your place with the honduras in Jesus' name. Amen.
May I?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item four, new business. A, discussion and possible action awarding bid for group medical dental, vision, term life, and gap insurance employees group benefit. This is an action item, so we need to entertain a motion to discuss, please.
Motion to discuss.
Second. All in favor? Discussion made, sir.
Oh, not married. So, based on the request that I did was a regular meeting in September, one of the special meetings in September, we did issue an RFP for medical insurance that the council had requested. We had a very short timeframe to be able to get it back, the time to be able to know some numbers and give it in the budget. So, that timeframe was about 14 days from the time we put it out until it was due. Because it was such a short timeframe, we never did get a response from from United Healthcare with our numbers for last year because they won't say we'll give a response. We gave them less than 30 days. Also, we never got a response from that with numbers for last year. So, when the bids were open, we did have a number of bids for vision or dental or some of those, but we only had one bid for for healthcare. The original bid that we had had from United Healthcare for the renewal, the original renewal rate, they'd been submitted, but the reduced rate was not submitted. And we did have four options from Blue Cross Blue Shield. They're on page one of the document. If you guys have their photos, it's the same document I gave you the other night. There's two different rates to go with each one. Obviously, it's the annual premium and then there's a bundle rate. Bundle rate if we include vision and accident life and dental. And then on the very back page of that document is the bundle rates and the bundle rates are significantly higher. So, we just left the bundle rate sheet up on front. The bid that the bids from from Blue Cross Blue Shield came in from New Curbing, New Curcuma, he's here. I'll let him go over the different proposals and what there are that you guys have any questions you can ask me. Here, I'm talking about the four options.
Good afternoon, Councilman, my name is Pierre Newcur. If you all are looking at the handout, the current plan design as well as your premiums on the top line. If you look at option two, that is the closest plan design for the most reduced dollar amount. The out-of-pocket on this particular plan has got a $5,600 total out-of-pocket. Right next to it, you'll see the sure and gap to cover the $5,600 exposure to the employee together for the annual fee of $420,000 a year. There's another plan which is number three, which is mimicking the same co-page for the employees as what they currently have now on the current plan. But that does increase your premium to $472,000 versus what you're currently paying now at $437,000. The renewal is at $546,000 if you decide to stay with United Healthcare. So, the closest recommendation would be that at $420,000, get as close as possible to what your employees have currently now. Bundling effect with Blue Cross. By putting the vision, the dental, the life insurance with them along with the medical, they reduce all its premium about 90 percent. Go to page two, you'll see the difference between non-bundling.
That's actually page four. Get that page on the record.
So, if you look at option two by bundling, the medical and the gap together is $446,000 a year versus the first page at $420,000. So, you're looking at almost a $25,000 difference on medical premiums. Keep in mind, they do all pay for the medical premiums, the gap premiums, the life, the dental and the vision or voluntary products that the employees are paying for. So, even if we had a different proposal on vision that's a dollar last or $2 dollars a last per month depending on the employee, it's not making up a $25,000 difference. That's why the recommendation would be Blue Cross bundling does make financial sense.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, are we proposing a very inferior policy in comparison to what we had last year?
No, sir. In fact, if we like to be policy to policy, be number option three to the tune of $472,000.
We had a 100 plus 70 co-insurance last year, and now you're proposing a 70-30.
Co-insurance and the deductible when we deal with gap has no bearing. You could have a 10 percent co-insurance or a 10 percent deductible. What matters is the max out pocket allowed to the employee. That's how we're covering the total exposure to that employee with that either a $6,000 gap or a $8,000 gap, depending on which plan design you want one to work in. So, as an example, if I told, if we took your particular plan right now, if I have a heart attack, end up in the hospital, I'm there for three days, the bill's a hundred grand. Currently, right now, your employees exposure is $6,350. You have a gap company that's going to cover $7,000, which will cover your $6,350 exposure. Okay? So, I'm doing the same identical plan design on option two. So, my employee goes to the hospital, the same heart attack, his total exposure is only $5,600. I bought a $6,000 gap to cover the $5,600. So, no, I'm not buying an inferior product.
How did the loss experience work or issue? That's up to United Healthcare, that's up to me.
My name is Steve Brooks, the label book. Premium versus claims is kind of the bedrock of any type of you know, health plan out there. Shows how much money has come in and how much money has been spent. Every single company in this business can't put that out and will put it out if it broke 30 days ahead of time. In this particular case, we bid on this, we felt like we were extremely competitive on everything aside from the health because we felt like there were no premium versus claims. That's how you made an educated decision on this particular file. And at the end of the day, we didn't get into that. But you could extend this for two months and come back with a competitive bid and just pay the premiums with your current carrier, re-bid this, come back and take a look at it with some new knowledge.
Go ahead and step in real quick, as Mr. Brooks points out. We do have declination letters from Humana, Edna, and Texmus for the because of the timeline, the exposure that you currently have now, they did not want to hit that on. Not so much because of the experience, just because of your ongoing medical conditions currently.
Yes.
That's not correct. We did not have the premiums versus claims, which is how insurance gets sold, the salary price. Anything else there? Other counsel, who knows?
Now, in your experience with insurance, what have we just heard?
Excuse me?
What have we just heard? What have we issued?
See, the competitive bid was not produced for the simple reason the loss runs or the loss were provided to the other people that actually bid in it. So, there was no way possible to, you know, and in fact, we had put our current agent on notice already, you know, so those loss runs should have been out. I mean, those loss experiences should have been out.
You had to request the loss runs directly from the carrier, sir.
I have one question. How did you get a quote from Humana if you didn't have those loss experiences?
We didn't get a quote from Humana. We got a no bid. They will not give us a bid.
And then you said you had a declination from TML as well, so how did you present the business without the loss experience?
We had previous from last year's loss experiences. We had the last six months of loss experiences that we had provided them. They weren't current. Your loss experiences currently today are worse than they were six months ago.
I am sure reading against power these public school districts. And the information should be out 90 days before the new state law dictates certain time periods. Those rules should be out, so your agent had or your counselor had it at one point or another. But if you wanted to release it, you could keep it posted with that.
That's not true, Mr. Brooks, you need to know that.
I want to hear from different options of insurance this year. Is this the only one we have?
That's the only, the only medical insurance bid we have.
Nobody else can do it?
No, there's only medical insurance bids. It was easy.
Because we could not, we could not release.
We did not get loss runs from from the previous insurance in the city of Pierceau.
Well, it's no wonder. And I'm currently over here, it's no wonder. Yeah. No, you got this.
That's up to you guys. I mean, I don't know if we can extend what we have and redo our, I mean, I'll let insurance take it while.
We're failing to shop for our employees. We're stuck with New Cur. We're stuck with this plan. We've been in the shop right before we have a whole year. Put him on those last year.
We did put him on notice. You, I said, I explained this to the meeting, the city attorney agreed with my explanation of what that contract meant. We put him on notice after the start of the fiscal year. That notice said that after September 30th of this year, he would no longer be our agent director. I did introduction to the contract, I did sign the contract. You guys didn't either, but that's a contract we had. And we did exactly what the council asked. After we finished insurance last year, the council said provide the letter. We couldn't provide the letter last fiscal year because we didn't need the time limit. So, this fiscal year, that was provided. But there's automatic renewal contract. That renewals for fiscal year. And so, we provided the notice of this fiscal year and that 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 contract as an agent of record expires on September 30th.
One question. When were the premiums provided to us? The renewal, the renewal premium? What date was it provided to us?
First, we'll talk about it in a year.
Well, I know it was during those days when we had that. We didn't have to provide that.
What particular date was that?
I don't remember the exact name. It was whatever the first time was we gave it to you. I don't have that form in my insurance folder anymore. Whatever the date was, we brought it up the first time the council gave it.
Oh, the reason I'm asking, because again, the renewal costs go out like 90 days to six days in advance. So, if we only got plenty of notice, that's not plenty of notice.
No, you had about 45 to 60 days or maybe a little bit even previous to that.
I just heard about it probably like three weeks ago, maybe four weeks ago.
It was in August, we talked about it. I don't remember, I don't remember the exact date without having to find it, but I'll have my security, they don't have that document.
I will say, if you make us broken record, it would never happen. And we make sure we have the information for you every year. We put in a RFP, but we put all of that in this RFP and we make it broken.
Okay, so the date on the first document that we got, the date at the bottom of it is 8/24. That's the one we showed you the first week. This was the renewal rate through 8/24. 8/24, that was the renewal rate through 9/11. Less than 30 days.
Less than 30 days.
No, because we knew the renewal date was October 1st, so the bid 30, 7/38.
Well, they had, I mean, in order to prepare that, they had to know before, before August 28th. So, what are we looking at here? Our options are Blue Cross or United. And we've got four options with Blue Cross and we've got one of two with United. What are we looking at?
Okay, on this sheet, what you have is the renewal rate, the current insurance we have, and the four options with Blue Cross. Obviously, this is one we have to look at tonight. Or if you guys have some, please do like, as we run through our office on the week there.
And we got representative, you're from United?
I'm New Cur, I'm the third agent, sir.
Okay. Representing United.
I represent United as well as Blue Cross. All carriers.
Okay. And then who are you guys?
We're with Bates Brooks. We handle all carriers. We just didn't have the information to give the folk with the current folks. But everything else we bid on, we also, you can elect a broker record on anything here or consult it. And we make sure that doesn't happen to the next year.
So, you guys are not on the agenda there, huh?
So, your bids are not in this, am I right?
They have bids in for dental, life, accident, death, and term of vision.
So, we still trying to understand our options because we have to make a decision.
We don't have options. We have these options that are if nobody else was allowed to fail in the process, I mean, what options do we have? This is what the council wanted us to do this year.
Okay. Again, there was a contract, we did exactly what you guys asked us to do on the contract. Yeah, there was. There was a contract that said you have to provide a letter. You asked us to provide a letter and I provided the letter. But that contract still says that we have an agent record until September 30th.
Exactly. However, you could have gone off for bids dated, asking for bids dated effective date of October 1st. You know, you didn't have to wait till October 1st to go off bids. You know, you could have gone out when we, you know, when we knew that it was coming up for renewal. Like, you could have run out 60 days prior and asking for RFPs with an effective date of October 1st, you know. Last year, I understood you told me it was your first rolling last year. This year, there's no excuse.
If I had HR department on five people, like other cities do, that'd be pretty easy to do. We got a HR person that's working two days a week up here because they're short. And it's, you guys are totally wrong. I'm not going to sit here and argue about the contract. I have an opinion from the city attorney on the contract. We put it out. If we would have put it out, if we would have put out the other way, you asked each individual, you wouldn't have five people, five insurance agents come back with different bids from Blue Cross. You wouldn't have five insurance agents come back with different bids from Humana because they're only going to give one. They're not going to give multiple bids. Each company's going to give one bid. Because they don't give multiple bids, they would all be the exact same bid for the exact same people.
So, our options today are go with renewal for $546,000. With United or, I mean, we could pick any one of these top five.
You've got Blue Cross Blue Shield and United. You've got option one, two. Just what's in front of you.
So, we're told that option two with Blue Cross is very similar to what we have. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Or here, can we go month to month out of the term we have right now until we redo it?
Yeah. Your rate goes to $40,178 a month.
Instead of $30,000.
Instead of $31,000, you go to $40,000.
For two months, sir, for how long it takes to we requested those numbers, that we should be getting those numbers any day now because we're requesting.
No, sir. We found that, sir. I did place a request for that, go to that claim. And they told me that it would take 30 days. And that was maybe about shoots last week. And so, it wasn't going to come into after October 1st. I mean, right almost into the middle of October. But that form was, I did talk to emails and so forth with United Healthcare. They told me that they didn't have, but that it would take about 30 days. And so, that claim form would not come into after almost the middle of October, almost the middle of October. And then I they sent me the form, but I did not, I did not put it in.
You did not complete it?
No, sir. I didn't complete because as per your own request and for your request that the RFPs go out immediately, we worked on those, our RFPs as hard as we could. And when the claim form, kind of the claim form came in to request it, it wasn't going to be in on time for, for open, you know, the insurance companies needed. Yes, sir. Go ahead. No, go ahead. You interrupt us, sir. Go ahead. No, no, no. That's it, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Paul.
Yes, sir.
So, how do we, for
So, that's the difference of from the, from the current rate to the new rate. That's a difference of $9,032 a month. So, if it took three months, we're talking about $27,000 difference. About $27,100 difference. Some are pretty close now, $27,100. If the council wants to extend the current and open it back up, and we have the requests up, we should have it in the no later 60 days. That may get due December 15th. They can do it December 15th and set it for January 1st.
Okay, how do we see this? Guys, so last year, we had insurance coverage which was good or adequate for $437,000.
Last year, we had, is it this current fiscal year?
Yes, this year.
It's the current year, $437,000. That was what we had, it's fixed to expire.
Yes.
That's what we had, it's fixed to expire. The previous, the renewal rate that we had from TML the year before, because we had TML the fiscal year before, it was going up to about $480,000. So, that was why we did the RFP and we ended up with this one at $437,764, yes.
And it was okay insurance convenient?
It actually was better than the TML insurance.
Okay. And so, so now, we have an option that's $420,000, $17,000 less, and it's comparable, which is what I already said.
Yes, sir.
It's comparable, so what are we missing?
So, it's comparable on the out-of-pocket. The co-pays go up a little bit. So, the portion of what employee pays when they go each visit goes up a little bit. And then the new, the rate structure on the prescriptions is very different. It's a 280 something page document that you go through to figure out where your prescription fits in there.
The co-pays go up to what?
It goes from 35 to 45 for regular documents.
But the gap insurance covers the deductible 100 percent?
The gap insurance covers that, yes.
Really, the only change is co-pay went from 35 to 45.
Yes.
That's the only change.
Yes.
And we saved $17,000.
Except that specialist went from 70, if you have to go with those specials, heart specials.
$7,000.
It goes from 70 to 90. The biggest, the biggest addition we had in the insurance last year, the biggest addition, the biggest benefit that we got in the insurance last year was that the labs became included. So, TML insurance labs are not included. And the insurance we got last year, they included lab work as well. And this one carries that lab, that lab work full.
So, really, other than the special, there's an increase in special. See, the special doctors and the increase in
Right.
And it's $17,000 cheaper. And Blue Cross, which is major period.
$17,000 to $666,000.
So, how do we, what are we missing?
What you're missing is that it wasn't competitive. There was not, there was not room for anyone other to vote or bid it because not the proper documentation was not provided to all the people that were trying to bid, you know. And that's the only thing, that's what I was trying to say is that, I mean, we have to be good stewards of the resources that the City of Pierceau has provided. I mean, has entrusted us and I think we should be go out there and be competitive in as many brokers that we can to get the best product that we can for employees for the less amount of money.
So, you're saying if we were competitive, we would begin with less than $420,000?
I don't know. That's just it. I mean, how, I mean, we don't know that for a fact. We don't know if they're something cheaper, they're $420,000. I don't know that for a fact. But then again, we didn't, we didn't give people the opportunity to bid. That's what, that's what just bothers me. I mean, because not everybody was given the opportunity to bid.
So, you people, like you mean Blue Cross here, we have Blue Cross, you have United, you mean like Edna, you mean other insurance companies or are there other insurance companies?
Yeah, other real insurance companies. You know.
It has. Huh?
Then still not the same.
Yeah, you got Humana.
We had a local agent, but we're only having here a period of hours. Blue Cross, Humana.
Edna.
Edna, United Healthcare.
What, United Healthcare is here.
It could be some captive, captive insurance companies as well. I mean, you could bid them as well. I mean, you know, New Cur, New Cur. I mean, he says that he represents all the insurance companies. I do say, I mean, insurance agent too, I represent every company too. I mean, the pitch as well, you know.
And I've done my whole village, sir. I've done my whole villages. I've done exactly what the council has asked me to do. I brought back the best rates for the employees along with helping them, not just selling them the insurance. I'm actually here with complaints, helping every single employee with their claims filing, getting them done, getting them paid. It's not because I say so, ask your employees. The customer service point and anything else is what we provide. Not just money.
So, sir, $420,000 divided by 12, that's $35,000 a month. So, there is, that's an annual option, there's a monthly option. And you said we give $40,000 a month, so that's $5,000 all. That right, so the about $60,000.
No. I'm going to continue the current. Right. From your current, so if you decided not
So if you decided not to go with Blue Cross and you just decided to go with United Healthcare and renew your current plan, you're increasing your monthly exposure by an additional nine thousand dollars.
Per month, that's right.
Per month, on the...
Yeah.
And that would, that would be multiple. Sure.
Yeah. That's a four, six, five, of course.
Mr. Col's the point.
Just to kind of give you an idea, when you first came back with United Healthcare and they had given you all that extra push before you all went out to bid, they actually matched what you were currently paying. But because they have all the history of how, how many illnesses are ongoing, they couldn't go down anymore. But if you notice, Blue Cross is beating what you currently have now. That's why we got those explanation letters from the carriers, because they saw what you already had in the past. I have to disclose what you currently have now. You're not getting any healthier. It's getting worse. So for you all to say, okay, let's just take it out to bid again, those numbers aren't looking any better. They're looking worse on a day-to-day basis.
So we, what the claim state is, if you're saying they're getting worse, you must have a claim state that's...
I'm going off of what I have. That's what United Healthcare is saying. This is the best I can do on the renewal by going with the...
Robert, I, I hear, I hear exactly what you're saying. Um, just, just looking at this, um, I heard that, that last year, United Healthcare got TML and UPR United got a break of, I mean, a little forty thousand dollars. You know, so they're, they're benchmarking them, but still, what, here's, here's what we have in terms of, um, understand, understand the disappointment and understand, uh, what, what are we going to do? You know, what, what, what are we going to do with this particular one? We've got, um, if, if we, if we go with a renewal, um, it is going to cost us quite a bit, kind of eight thousand dollars for this one. Here we got an, an opportunity, you know, to get a comparable coverage. We have a little bit left. So ultimately, there, there is a savings, there is a savings. I, I can't, I'm sad to understand, I'm just trying to, I just, I, but, well, we need to do something. And, and I don't think it's irrational, um, Blue Cross, Shield, you know, with that. I can see the numbers. Again, it is a savings, um, so...
Well, you have two options, really. You can accept something on this, on this, or you can not accept it and we do with United Healthcare and go back out bidding. So you really have two separate options. Well, I actually have three separate options.
Well, yeah, so we can pay monthly at nine dollars a month and go through this process. And then, Robert, how long will it take?
Well, depending on the, uh, the loss history, which I think they can, as far as I understood, I thought they ordered, there were already ordered. I thought they were all delayed, you know? Now, now to hear that, it would, in order, it was never placed. I'm like, oh, my God. I mean, you know?
I didn't place it because it was going to come in in the middle of October. I didn't place it because I didn't think you guys would still want to offer RFPs.
Excuse me, sir, that, that was from your, your call.
No, it wasn't. But that's the reason that I did not place, because when I, like I said, when I, they sent me that claim, they told me it would take thirty days. And so I looked at the calendar, I said, well, I'll be after October first. And by then, you know, the R, the deadline for RFPs is, is far gone. That's why I made that call, sir.
I think this council, the last two, three years, we, what we've done is we've tried to maintain integrity throughout everything that we do, maintain integrity, give everybody the first chance, the first opportunity. I'm forced to do the current insurance and, and not from bits, again, that's going to give everybody a chance to do it. I mean, this is what we're allowed. We can stand up for what's right. We can get backed up into a corner and then have a new position on this. That's what we, um, the things that we've done, that's the save, save the straight on, and council. Let's, uh, let's lay out a timeline for what our application is going to be. What are the next three months?
I would say January first, we'll give sufficient time. We should be able to, we'd have, we would have the documentation prior to, um, somewhere around November fifteenth, the eighth of the nineteenth, somewhere around November fifteenth. And then put it out for, you could put it out till November fifteenth, that's almost a month. And then you'd have to do it quickly in November fifteenth, because you have to have time over to go and get that stuff entered into the system. It'd have to be a, a big process up there. We have the October first, we can do it.
Where we would have been doing...
January first to start, to start whatever insurance is left.
And we could choose.
Any other questions? Entertainer motion to address...
I would say we'd find part of the options and extend our, our insurance. And so we can, we can process it again, have some of the best...
So it's a recur, uh, review. You have to say something. That is something, right? So, I'm sorry.
We do a monthly, so that we can start the process. Maintain some parity as possible. Also, yeah.
On the favor? Motion carries. So item four B, council workshop. Review and discuss the proposed annual appropriation budget for the fiscal year beginning October first, 2018, and ending September thirtieth, 2019, as submitted by the city manager, finance director, and administrative staff. Need to entertain a motion to open the workshop, please. On the favor?
So everybody has all these in front of them, right?
Yes.
So everything's put together. Um, I want to talk about a couple of things that are in there before we start flipping through pages. Based on what we discussed the other night, um, the changes that we've made in the draft, there's not a way, we didn't make a whole lot of changes outside of it. Um, except for all the line items related to employee pay and, or whatever. Um, so first and foremost, um, the, uh, the amount that's in the document, that's in the document for insurance is four hundred and twenty, no, the number was four hundred and twenty, uh, four hundred and, four hundred and twenty thousand dollars was what was calculated in there for insurance. So, come down here first, we'll have to make an adjustment based on whatever we see at that time. Um, so just, just sort of, I know insurance is funded, we'll be able to pay it for a few months because there's obviously more than that there to pay for. Um, but at the point where the decision is made on insurance, then we'll have to make some kind of adjustment in the budget to, uh, whatever. If insurance goes up, we'll have to add some more money into that. If it goes down, then we'll have to venture money on, but we'll have to make an adjustment in Jan, on January first, or they do that. Um, I put this document up here, it's in, actually, it's on about the fifth page, I think, in the, not at the front of the first half, two pages in front of the first half. This is the monthly stipend thing that we talked about so much in the last meeting. And so I just, we, we laid it all out in a single document, so it's easy to see that document. We won't end up sticking in the personnel manual when we get to the point of being a personnel manual. Um, and that way, it's, it's just a one-page document everybody can look at. The stipends that are in there, tenure, uh, as we talked about last time, one of the things that you guys said was to make sure that everybody came out positive and nobody came out negative. So I had to make a couple of adjustments on the tenure one. Um, so tenure six, tenure five, and tenure four actually moved up a little bit. Um, so tenure six ended up becoming a hundred and twenty dollars, um, a, a month, which is anybody over forty years. Tenure five went up to a hundred and ten dollars a month, which is anybody over thirty years. And tenure four went up to a hundred dollars a month, which was anybody over twenty years. Um, and that was, that, there was two people up there that hadn't had, um, a tenure stipend from before, that's only, you know, that same level, make sure we didn't have any negative, any negative numbers up on the top end. Um, the uniform, we talked about that. That's the positions that are required uniform, but they're not provided by the city. Uh, heavy equipment operator, heavy equipment and applicator, uh, those two are in there. We talked about those. An applicator, we have to have a license, straight mosquitoes, uh, heavy equipment, we left in there. Um, the other one that I had to add in was a utility crew leader, because I had two more that were negative, and that's all that I could get off of, was, was, and they're both team leaders out, out of the field anyway, so that's the way we got them to be off of. Uh, assistant city clerkship differential viable. The fire department, I reduced the amount of the fire departments in this document. Um, it's, it wasn't, one, it's not right that those guys were making more than the people with K-9s, because K-9 is a daily function, and the fire department's not a daily function. Uh, so it was reduced in there. We're also going to have to look at, at how that stipend's applied, uh, because I think there, there's, there's times when employees are being pulled away from work and it's not fire related, and we're going to have to make sure that that is, gets fixed.
Of course.
Yes, ma'am.
Do we carry a cannabis?
Have a what?
Do we carry a cannabis?
Yeah, we're requiring a cannabis city clerk. Because the city clerk's not, the city clerk's not here, there has to be somebody here to accept service, um, to take files for this start.
Mr. Digneau did it, I think, back in twenty fourteen when Josie Gonzalez was the city clerk.
And this has been there for a while.
I have a question. On the fire department, um, on the second, it was thirteen twenty. Uh, on the previous, uh, which gave us previously...
It was a hundred, it was a hundred and sixty dollars a month. No, it was a hundred, it was eighty dollars a pay period, correct?
It was, it was thirteen twenty total, thirteen twenty. That, that's the number that I saw.
I thought it was nineteen twenty. If it was nineteen twenty that I did it per month instead of per pay period, uh, but it actually was two thousand and eighty dollars, because it was eighty dollars a pay period. There's twenty-six pay period, you have two extra pay periods. It might have been, if I did it per month instead of my pay period, I probably have to correct you.
Oh, I forgot.
Technical? Was it twenty eighty?
Nineteen twenty.
Nineteen twenty, okay. So it was wrong, because it was per pay period, not per month, and I did it per month, but it was in nineteen. Because if you do it per month, this time's twelve, but if you're per pay period, that's actually twenty-six, that's extra pay period. So, yeah, so that reduced, that reduced the fire department to fourteen forty. Um, the K-9, of course, then there, then there's, there's ones at the bottom, there's two at the bottom there, the FTO. There's field training officer, that's what police officers, is, has somebody with them, they're training them. Uh, they have some extra duties, while that's happening, private reports and all that other stuff. So they get paid that only during the time that they're training someone. So it's a temporary stipend. The day the training starts, uh, they get it, we put it in the system, and it ends when the train, when that officer finishes. Sometimes we, sometimes one new officer, we train by multiple. Field training officer, sometimes I have for two months, and sometimes for two months, and so it switches depending on how. And then we talked about the interim director, if we have a director, we can put them on the spot. The critical area one, I don't, for lack of a better word, I don't know what council or non-council calls it, because I don't know what else to call it. Um, but the critical area, what we did was, uh, we put that one in for everybody who works manually outside. Um, and that came out to a total of about fifteen thousand dollars a year, applied to a number of employees. Um, here they have the big sheet up there. Where's the big sheet that you... There's another sheet, the sheet is again, again, to use one? It, it's, no, 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 not that one. Um, there was another one that we, we started to put it in the, in the budget itself, but we decided not to put it in there because it had employee names, uh, with stipends with it, so we left it out in the budget, but we're quick, there's a sheet, got a copy up for you guys. And you'll see each one of the positions that it's highlighted, it's red, you'll see how many of the, the people were actually, actually ended up getting that stipend. Um, there was, there was a significant number of them that worked outside and ended up getting that critical area. Thought about calling each stipend, thought about calling a bunch of other things, but we just left it on the critical area. Because at some point, I mean, I mean, the council could decide how it applies, what applies to, or what it applies to, and I have it to another department. So each one of them are listed there, the codes, the monthly, everything else. And then it talks about what the requirements are to get it. Um, so for instance, um, the K-9, uh, one, they have to complete the training and be assigned a K-9. Also, just because they have K-9 certification doesn't mean they get it. Uh, they have to be assigned a K-9 department before they get it. Um, the FTO says that it's a temporary, based on, on being a field training officer. And then that bottom of the field note on there, the critical areas, uh, we left that as departments to be assigned by now. So the council will both have, we, we partner with that critical area one, and that's how the council will change, will change that. Uh, the tenure ones will become effective on, um, on anniversary dates. So that we, so somebody may have their anniversary date in September of this coming year, and so they may not be giving it at the start of the fiscal year, but they get their anniversary date and it'll apply at that time. All the rest numbers, what it's assigned to. So with the big sheet that you guys have, I'm going to have a sheet up here.
That's top two.
Oh.
That's top two.
No, I know, it is, this is the big sheet. So you can see each one of these that has a little red highlight over here on their department. Uh, that's all it was, that critical area, uh, stipend was applied to. And it's, and then we, this sheet has got their, their, they have hired, that's their anniversary date. And so as soon as, so for instance, if you come down here to this one, you've got a one, five, twenty seventeen right here. So when the new budget goes into effect, that person will not be receiving the, the stipend up here because they're not already in this group, but in January, on January fifth, they will move up to that. Because at that point, they did it for two years. Uh, we've got one here, three twelve, so that's three twelve, Thursday. They have to go from five years to six years, so that person will move up. So they'll be moved, they'll be moving between, um, the categories. So that, that kind of, because, because up to this point, there hasn't been that, something to look forward to with the, so I guess, I mean, this is almost like another scale to look forward to, especially on the tenure one. That's why we go so heavy on the tenure, because the stipend type itself. Because now they know, okay, I have to expect another year, and I'm going to get this, or I have to make it six more months, and I'm going to get this. And it'll be effective on that date, and it'll be just, it'll be applied by, by these, our department on the date that, the date that comes up. So wanted to make sure that everybody saw that. On the right side of that big sheet, you have, it has the differences. There are no negative differences over there anymore. So we made sure we got rid of all the negative differences. So it will be a positive, um, a positive impact to every one, every, every employee sees something for them. They'll go check that. So I wanted to point that out before we started going through the, the document itself. Uh, under the, behind the first half, which is the general fund, on that first page, we page one of the general fund summary, um, on your draft budget. So I want to talk about the differences between this and the draft budget. Um, down there at the bottom, where we have the twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen approved, there's a zero. Uh, that's the number that was eight thousand and something in the last budget, because we had extra. Um, and the reason that that is zero is because if you go to page three, uh, that document under that tab, page four, excuse me, under personnel, there's a new line item, which is line item number one oh five, which is stipends. And there is now thirty-one thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars and ninety cents in that line item. Uh, so that's the eight thousand that was left over from before, plus the difference of what we put into the insurance today. So there's, that, that's, and within the general fund itself, that is probably sufficient, uh, a sufficient amount of money to fund the stipends for the general fund. Uh, because you remember, you have stipends in the general fund, they already have stipends in the utility fund as well. Everybody see what I'm talking about?
Yes.
So page four, the fifth line item, now one oh five stipends. The full balance that was left on page one, we've transferred into that line item, uh, to be able to pay the stipends. So that, those are just one, put the code, when they, or somebody stipends into the payroll system, they'll put the code to that line item, and it'll automatically pull out of that. So play it along one place, it's the easiest place to put them, uh, because they're all brought from the same place. Uh, the other change on the, from the, on the proposed budget in, in the general fund is on page, look at page five. At the bottom, the transfer is out. Um, we have the revitalization, the downtown grant. Joseph put it in line number eight oh nine, which is not, which is, that's not an accurate statement, because it's not a transfer. Uh, so we took it out of line number eight oh nine. If you flip the page to page six, which now has the title entry department, that was the previous administrative services or whatever. Um, down under services line three thirty-four, the downtown grant, that twenty thousand is now down there. So we just moved it from one place to another, so it makes sense. Um, because it wasn't really transferred, it was money out of the general fund, and it was going to that line item for that person. And that's the full extent of the changes that were made to the general fund draft. Anybody have any questions? Everybody see what we're talking about? Go ahead. Just one second. Okay. We're just trying to catch up to you. Which, which one are you looking for, I'll help you.
You okay?
Done?
I'm all right, just looking.
Okay, everybody's, everybody's caught up, everybody sees what, everything we're talking about. So that, those are the only changes we had to make to the general fund draft, um, to get the stipend plan in, and to get it, to get it all, um, all like, everything, all like not taken care of in that one. of in that one. So now that, that reserve balance on the front goes to zero, the deficit or the balance on the front that we had left over goes to zero, and all the rest, that plus what we did, the insurance goes into that stipend line item. So what we talked about the other night was making sure we had the stipends funded for at least six months, and then we would be able to address that hopefully as we get through this other process. I think the stipends were fully funded on the, on the, we haven't had time to sit down and go through everyone, the employees say, okay, this employee's gonna get tenure three months out of the year, this employee's gonna get, because we have to get all the changes made. But I think thirty-one, the total was seventy, it's on your sheet at the bottom there, the total for all the stipends was seventy thousand. Seventy-six thousand six eighty by the time we added the critical areas stipend. So, and that's about fifty-fifty on both sides. We'll have employees that leave, that were getting that tenure stipend, a new employee will come in, they won't get it, I mean, it's, it's, it's all gonna, that, that's the maximum amount, they all have the whole thing the full year, and that won't happen.
And that is, and that is budgeted in here?
The thirty-one thou, the thirty-one thousand's budget, we didn't have enough to budget the full amount, so we talked about it the other night, but at least we got, we've got it budgeted for the first six months. So between general fund and utility fund, we have forty-eight thousand of the seventy-six thousand budget right now, which is definitely enough to make it to the first six months. If something happens and we have a problem with the stacking or whatever, we can always use salary savings to attract, do a budget transfer or a transfer net line item, we'll be able to, we'll be able to fund it for the first year, not, not all you concerned.
Have you made, taken into account if, if the employees between tenders, between the, you know, you know, five year and six year, you know?
That's, we could have time, go through, look at each employee, figure out what it is, but historically, with things like this, that, that maximum amount you have there, you'll have some that are gonna jump classes, and you'll have some of those, those upper classes that are, and it'll all wash out, I mean, it always does. I've never seen one of these end up costing.
So it's, it's gonna be a wash?
It's gonna be a wash. And then if you have an employee leave for a month, and something happens, and it's not, you have an employee leave for a month, then you have that salary saved, we don't have enough to transfer that salary saved, go for the month, and that's gonna, that's gonna help catch them. I have a weak one.
How do you handle an employee that goes out for, not, not sick leave, but, well, no, not that, that, I'll talk to them.
FMLA?
Yeah. How would you handle that?
Okay, so that's, one of the things we've been talking about, there's two issues that I have with the stipends that we're gonna address. So the October, November, we're writing some policies related to those, because since the stipends is in the budget of the council, so we're doing those policies. If they go out on FMLA, they shouldn't be getting the stipends while they're out on FMLA. And if they have, if they're, if they're a pay period, they have leave without pay, or they're a no call, no show, or something like that, they shouldn't get the stipends without pay period, if they're not at work, when they're supposed to be here, and they don't have approved time off, they shouldn't be getting stipend paid. And so we're gonna, we're gonna set some guidelines. You have to be here even if you're working, if you take approved leave, that's fine, if you leave without pay, you don't get it, or you lose it for three months, you're losing the warrant, try to discourage people. You know, we talked about FMLA, about the government medical leave back, but directors here at the FMLA, FMLA needs a Friday, Monday leave back. People just don't show up on Friday, Monday. So we're gonna, we're gonna use those as a incentive, make sure we get people to come to work too. They shouldn't get it if they're not here.
And what if the person goes on short-term disability? So a short-term disability traditionally pays sixty percent of their salary. So is it gonna be sixty percent of the salary, including the stipend, or, or just the base salary without the stipend?
So if they've exhausted their leave, if they're taking approved leave, if they have sick leave, or, or vacation time, they're taking that, then they get full pay. Once they exhaust that, if they have a medical leave, then it's not full, it's not full pay. And I think they have to, it's like twenty-five dollars, they have to have a minimum twenty-five dollars a week pay or something for a period of, but always not full pay. So if they're not working full-time, if they're not getting eighty hours of pay period, then they're not getting the full percentage of the, of the stipend. That'll be the policy. Any other questions about that, or what's, or how we changed the general fund proposal? Cut it.
Cut it. Please say it. Well, so what do you explain?
No question on the, um, if, for, this contract, is that what we do?
That's the judge.
The eligible judge?
Yeah, the judge is not included, and I'm not included, because their contract position cannot be included. So, judge, it part that's not included, it's not included, we have one part that's included.
Wasn't the Main Street also a contract, what was it? What were we getting based on that, a contract, well?
No, that was, we transferred, we transferred another position over to, they have this contract, why their, why their requirements, has to be on the same board. Okay, the next tab is the community development loan grant for the coming year, that's the budget for the money that we'll be getting from CBT. It does not show our match, because our match is all in the utility budget, so it doesn't have a monthly period, so utility budget, and whatever portion we're required to pay as part of our match comes out, comes out of the utility way. The fire fund is the next tab. The, we have one transfer in for the general fund, which is the ten thousand dollars, which covers the bonuses at the end of the year, and a hundred and twenty thousand dollars from the, the district, and so the total budget is one thirty. I do want to point out on page three of that document, and the proposed that we put out, we were still talking about potential giving the fire truck, and so down at the bottom, on the fire truck lease, or on the fire truck tender, where we had twenty-five thousand dollars down there, because we pulled that out of the budget for this year, that's been moved back up to the line item, where it was at. So the line item's been readjusted a little bit, but it's still the same amount of money.
Where, where?
On page three of the fire fund, right?
Page?
Yeah, just put on, oh, at the bottom. So you had dead service for fire truck lease, and we had some money in there. No, it was in, no, that was not. Because, we had talked about kind of by the fire truck, we had the first year.
It is in there.
No, it's not in there now, it's not in there now, because when we, when we render the, when we started talking, the second version of the draft that we went through, we pulled out the equipment purchase for the fire department, we pulled out the equipment purchase for utilities, but what we said was, we could go ahead and pull it out, try to balance the budget, what we can make in terms of this year, defer the, defer the cost for following year, when we do, we have a money.
When will we start looking at that?
All right, after the first year, yeah, we start looking, if we do something through government capital, it's always that way, we can, we can get, we don't make a first payment for a year after we get the, for the stuff that we have sold. But yeah, we can start looking at that after the first of this year. The next one is the CL twenty sixteen, because that's still an active bond, we have to have a budget in here for it, it lists the full amount. Of course, you have your, your budget, the one that we just redid the last week at the council meeting, where you improve projects, and that's the budget that you follow, as far as this person is going, this one, just to show them that full amount, that's actually what we're doing.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, we have that, this, this one, it's pretty hard to follow, we all have one, you know, similar.
The fire fund is utilities.
Oh. Okay, sorry, I usually ran that tab, but they're put together, you got the last budget, it's put together. So you're, you're the fire fund, right? Okay. Oh, no, we're the twenty, the CL twenty sixteen. So this, that's basically the same thing every year carried forward. Oh, they mount, they mount the modest budget, so again, you use the budget that we have, that you guys approved it for our expenditure. The next one is the hotel motel. The only change in that one, from the proposed, on the transfer end, we have to transfer a little bit more to cover the stipends and the insurance, so to cover the stipends. So the, the transfer end was increased stipend, to be able to cover it, so that it was a zero balance. To have twenty-three interest and sinking.
One quick question.
Okay, what?
So of the seventy-six thousand, we need to take some from, seventy-six thousand. Then the first stipends?
Yeah, like fourteen hundred, thirteen hundred, so because CLs is funded out there, part of Rogers is funded out there as well, so a little bit of it comes out, and the proportionals of their salary comes out.
Okay.
Yes?
One quick question. The audits, is this gonna change if?
The audits, when we finally get them down here, we'll, we'll do a budget adjustment to adjust that, that budget to fund it. We don't have this final stuff, we don't have, they're still, they're trying to get a bunch of cities put together down here at the same time, so they can save all this money with their travel costs. So they had us at the tool, and then we're not ready to come, and then Dilly jumped in and said, hey, wait, but we don't be part of the two, and so they're trying to get everything situated, definitely get their background work done on them as well. So that every time somebody jumps in, our travel costs are reducing, so we're saying, yeah, four way a bit. Because it's not, it's not, maybe it's out of money, but we'll save this money. Okay, Fund Twenty-three Interest and Sinking is the next one, that has not changed from the draft budget, revenue, some rates, taxes, I mean, that's part, that's the point one four two seventy-five, three, two hundred is portion of our annual taxes. Now that goes into that, and that's for dead service for anything that has, that is attached to interest and sinking, which is part of the twenty sixteen bond, and part of the twenty-twelve loan, as well as the tax. That did not change from the original. If you'll notice, on the revenue over and under at the bottom, it shows in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen, that we actually collected less than what we anticipated, that's what that negative number means. In twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, or actually, we collected more, because we collected all the, remember, it was three hundred something percent on back taxes. So we collected extra last year, so that offset the negative balance that we had in that fund. So some years, you don't collect everything, it's a little bit negative. So you have, you keep a little bit of running balance in there, hopefully if you're collecting back taxes most of the time, you keep it, so now we're back to a positive balance. Fund number twenty-three is the police training fund, the budget for, last year was five thousand dollars, there's nothing budgeted in there this year, that's some of those payments that we give, the small payments we give related to licensing, related to something that drives license, and something, something else. We had not got that money until, we had got that money for like four years until last year, and now we're back on the list to get that. When we find out what that, how much actually gonna be, rather than put a number in there and be wrong, which is what happened last year, when we find out what we get, then we'll, we'll do a budget adjustment for that. Police forfeiture, that is a little bit different, so police forfeiture is, well, there's certain cases we have where anything that's forfeiture, particularly if it's related to a drug bust, or something along those lines, that's not, that's not municipal in nature, it's state in nature, and anything that's seized as part of that, vehicles, cash, whatever else that's seized that has value, that we have to give about seventy percent of that, when it's finally done, and then when the judge approves the final seizure, and if the DA gets about thirty percent, we get about seventy percent. So that seventy percent goes in there, and then they use that, that fund to buy equipment or whatever. We keep it at about twelve thousand every year, that's, that's pretty normal for the amount that we bring in. If we have a really good year, we bring in more, if we have a really bad year, we bring in less, we just, it's an estimate of the middle of the mark. But it's another one of those, that if the money's not coming in, they're not allowed to spend it, we don't pre-spend that money, because we're not guaranteed for incentive, it's not a guaranteed revenue. But we like to have a budget, just in case they do get something that they're able, very most people to get in. We've used that to buy cameras, we, our body cameras, we've used that to buy, we use to buy other equipment that they use over there, I mean, the body camera, we use it to buy best. What else we use that for here?
Training?
Training. Training as well. So the more they seize, the better we do. The next tab, we'll get this, is the last big budget, which is the utility fund, and there's actually just a couple of changes in that utility fund based on, on what we did. First page, page one, obviously, instead of having a fourteen thousand dollar balance, we have a proposed budget, we have zero out, because if you go to page three, we have added in line number one oh five for stipends, and then fourteen thousand six seventy-three that was left over is now in the line item, to be able to get the stipends. If you have any other questions, sure, try to answer them. Since we talked about it, the last one, the workshop, I'll bring it up again real quick. The meeting was set, is set for Tuesday at one-thirty in San Antonio. Bobby and I were talking about it a little bit before the meeting started, they have been very straightforward, they seem very eager to meet, so I'm pretty positive about, about Tuesday, like Tuesday, maybe, those progress. The deadline is that, the August, our October meeting, they did, they did mess around by changing the schedules, and being available for next year, so that was a good thing, if they weren't interested, they wouldn't have cared.
Madam Mayor, one thing that I'd like to do with the budget team, and our recent, our move with the insurance, and then with the stipends, the insurance at approval, we approved it's not, we're at a hundred and eight thousand dollar shortfall unfunded. We've got four hundred and twenty, we have four hundred and thirty-seven thousand, four hundred and twenty thousand budgeted, so I would like us to just make it note that we know that it's, it's unfunded, but we are going to be able to address that down the road, and then also make them note that our stipends are also unfunded, forty-five thousand dollars.
So with what's possible with that, we have to pass a balance budget.
Yeah, we have to pass a balance.
We don't have a shortfall, that's what we're saying, we have to pay for insurance, that's what we're saying, we have to pay for stipends. We know we have work to do next year, but we, we have to pass a balance budget, so play that note in there, be back. I appreciate it.
Essentially, it just means you're required to pass a balance budget, with the understanding of course, moving forward, things change, then you have to make changes. What you have in your budget, what you need to get to fiscal year one, what changes occur, good or bad, you have to make a change.
Okay, Andy Mosses, Andy Wise, exactly.
Money for continued litigation is in there. If there is a settlement requirement, it's not, it's hard to, why you have to settle, you have no idea what a settlement will be, or we do allow one, any, two.
Losses?
Yeah, two.
You got two.
Well, one of those spots, we have, we have.
So they're pre-pending, they're only, the likelihood, you're only looking at potential liability in one of them, same set, there's no way to determine, you know, the evidence.
So what only have potential liability, one of them actually have potential for significant financial gain. Be nice to them, at least this one's there. And it, it has potential, I mean, the one that we have the opportunity for significant financial gain, it has potential to be bigger than, than the maximum liability on the bill. But until they blow out, I mean, it's, what are you doing? Let's play.
Well, we still have, we have to, and probably.
You have the legends who still have to be dismissed, that's correct.
And because of the speculative nature of the outcome, it's really difficult to budget unless you have reserves. A lot of cities with reserves, then no long end, the reserve comes potentially going to be tapped for that.
What was the second one?
Well, the, the twice?
You mentioned it, second.
That's the eight.
That's the eight one.
That's the one we have potential for significant financial gain.
Removing the insurance, wouldn't, that would be the balance budget, because we're only gonna pay the, through January, and in January, we readjust it, not a correct.
Sure, well, well, so we've got, this budget has more, twenty thousand dollars in insurance, so once we get to January, there's plenty, there's plenty to get in there, and then January, we'll see what happens, and if there's not enough, then we'll have to make a, make a budget, a budget adjustment, so by that time, we may have enough salary saved to order else to make a lot.
So, so in essence, there's no deficit?
No, that, yeah, but right now, this one, there's no deficit, yeah. But if we did, if we end up saving with UnitedHealth, if we, if the plan was to save with UnitedHealth, because only through, we don't ever get deficit. Right now, we don't, there's no guarantee that there is a deficit, so we don't know. Makes sense? Yeah, that makes sense.
You thinking?
I mean, budget, I mean, I've been just like, notes, 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 I went through this stuff yesterday, and, I mean, it's just, you know.
Overwhelming?
Overwhelming, you know, I, I'm truly for, you know, like I said, I'm truly for the, the, the...
That's where your pay scale, you can do whatever you want to do with your pay scale. Maybe you change the tenure somewhere along the lines, break it into smaller groups or separate those other groups. So, you know, just straight across the board, four percent for everybody. All it does is make the disparity even bigger. Because that person that really that's up the bottom is making ten dollars an hour at four percent, they give forty percent raise. But the person that's been here that longer period of four percent may get a thing of dollars. And so all you're doing is expanding that gap between what you've farmed. And it doesn't fix the problem. And the problem is that Joe Loeb came in at a different time than somebody else, they'd make a different rate because they knew somebody or because it was in a law group when they were for money, so they gave them more. And, but they're going to do the same job. And so it doesn't fix that, it could exist employees because we didn't bring anybody back down. But over time, it gives us that baseline where everybody come in knows where they start. And everybody that's current is at least brought up to at least that level. And the ones that have been here longer that have been brought up, not all of them. There's some departments that over time, because of whatever reason, their salaries were increased tremendously. And most of our employees that have been here a long period of time, they're in those departments. And so they may be making one hundred and ten percent of what that salary survey says right now, one hundred and five percent.
A lot of them people are gone though. A lot of them people that you kept saying, you know, that were here because, you know, previous, you know, they left.
Employees?
Yeah, employees.
What we have, we have departments that are, that right now, they're ninety, ninety-five, one hundred percent of what that salary survey shows. Because over time, for whatever reason, those salaries were changed when the other salaries weren't changed. And a lot of the ones that have been here a long period of time are in those departments. The ones we have left that have been here a long period of time are in those departments. So now, we've got somebody that's at fifty-one percent and you give them a four percent raise across the board, now they're at fifty-two percent. But that person that was at one hundred and five was at four percent raise, they may go to one hundred eight or one hundred nine or one hundred ten. And we just grow that gap between positions in the department. I mean, that's my concern with it across the board. We do take into account, we'll decide to build a tenure, definitely takes into account a longer period of time how long they've been here, recognize that. And maybe at some point, the whole concept of getting a great pay scale is that those tenure numbers are expected. Or if you've been here thirty years, it's an extra two or fifty dollars. If you've been here forty, it's an extra three or four dollars. And maybe that's where we, where, you know, that's where you make a big difference in how long they've been here. Is with tenure. Or if you do smaller groups, you break it down, instead of having tenure, you have a gap at the top, you make a five-year gap. Whereas, it's quicker for me to get to the next, to the next one.
The other thing, another thing that I heard constantly was, we're spreading ourselves thin. We don't have enough employees, we don't have this. And I think that's a factor on the morale as well. So, a lot of them, actually, it's colorful what it is, eighty-five, eighty-five per deal. How is that going to even improve the manpower? That is not going to help the manpower. And I go back again with productivity, with this health productivity at this point.
It doesn't change the manpower, you're right about that, it doesn't change manpower at all. Again, it recognizes the need. So let's, let me tell you something from there. So we tell employees no raises, we're going to hire fucking people. You want to see productivity drop, I guarantee you productivity drop. Because you're not recognizing the fact that those sixty-six people that are out there carry the city or in other cities that are similar to them are five people carrying. And yeah, maybe there's complaints, complaints because it takes a little bit longer to get something done. But you know, and again, I'll go back to what I said, we can't fix that, we can't go back and fix the toilet full of water. We can't go back and fix getting Walmart economy, we can't change that. And there's thirty-five employees right there. And that's our difference between us and the other cities that are similar to the situation. We can't fix that, I mean, I wish we could, I would love to be able to fix all that. We can't, so we have to deal with the reality that we have, and the reality is how is, our employees know that compared to a city somewhere situated, plus a town goal with population and general fund, that we've got a lot less employees and they have to do more, and those people have to do those jobs. But those people, those jobs are a lot closer to one hundred percent than they are too. So we're expecting them to do more with less pay. And that they recognize that. And so now we're telling you, oh hey, we recognize that, that it's been, you know, that we've been, we're going to try to, we're at least going to try to address that and show you we're trying to get some.
So, that's exactly where I'm getting at. So, with more pay, it's more responsibility, is that correct? Because there's less manpower. So, we would expect possibly more, correct?
Well, I'm...
I mean, you know, I mean, you know, not really what it's already been put out there, but kicking out they're going to be compensated with what they're actually doing.
Well, it's something that we're going to be compensated for being out of the sundown, so.
Exactly, exactly.
Again, but you know, the whole picture up there was, was, there was three things we talked about. And that was trying to get to equality and competitive pay, working on the stipends and more positions. And I'm open, you know, the more positions thing is going to happen. It's just a matter of whether it's going to happen in a month or it's going to happen in thirteen months. But it's going, we know it's going to happen. So, rather than bringing in our positions now and making sixty-six employees feel like they're not appreciated, that's why, what we're like, it's, let's show them we appreciate them. And maybe they don't leave, maybe we don't have any other people leave. Or we lose all that institutional knowledge, all the training and all the everything else. And while we're waiting for another month or another eleven months or whatever it is to get those extra people who will put them up with that. And if we get lucky and if we do get the pilot and now we have extra agents where we can work something else, you know, maybe this is going to be more than we thought. Or we can get some more people.
All right. What I see this as, is as a process. And what I see looking back over four years from then, knowing that our employee numbers have dropped down, we have moved from, you know, and then look at the things that we've done. There's a lot of things that we haven't done. There's a lot of things that we've done. And a lot of things that our hats need to be off, our department heads. I do recognize that accountability has been brought to bear probably like it hasn't been in a long time. And again, it's a process. And so, this is something that desperately needs to be done. It desperately needs to be done to get a schedule. And we can go back to the drawing boards, I can talk about very beginning and hiring on salary survey, which will cost us a lot of money. We can go through the same process. But we have an accepted formula that utilizes local areas. We've taken a percentage of that, we migrated to that point. Where we feel, you know, I'm taking an assumption here is that council, we feel is a relative number for our base. But it accepts that. We've hammered out to we've given every employee a bump of some sort. So it is a part of the process that moves us down that road. And again, you know, just like we're thinking about insurance, just like we're thinking about the stipends, you know, we all are hungry to see more staff members get brought on, more work done. But part of this process, you know, these guys haven't had a proper living, re increase of any source now for over almost two, one, three years. And so, this is going to accomplish that. And I think productivity and morale are closely tied. They can only do so much. I don't know that we're going to see, I mean, you just think about it. We're going to have every man on a log or right now, you know. It's going to take a month to get the grass mowed, just that. So, we've got these obstacles, we've fought a hard battle to get to this point. But this, I mean, and I see it, and we're right there at the precipice. And so, I would just tell everybody, I mean, all our desires are the same, it's right around the corner. We can only do what we can only do. And as I see it, this is the best use of our funds to move forward, to be equitable. And we've done a good job of dictating, and management, to me, has done a good job of bringing it back. To make it equitable, everybody gets something, nobody's in the negative. And so, if we go back at this point and try to recreate the rear wheel, I don't know how we can do it any better. You know, given everything that we've got, I don't know how we can change it to make it better.
Mayor, can I just one thing, because I still understand a lot of people, I didn't get answered a council advisor's question. These salary surveys are the ideal, I mean, it's what people want. You want to strive towards that because you get the best results. And you try to get as close as you can. Because the surveys, you know, try to provide some more objective information that relates to what certain positions should pay, so on and so forth. But, when, I worked in a budget, this is my ninetieth year representing, what they did in the salary scale was in large measure responded to the share. Because they were losing a lot of employees. Totally, totally, I mean, as you probably know, I've sat in the jockey's shoes. I've been a finance advisor before, I've been a senior manager before. What you're trying to do is extremely difficult. When council advisors mentioned, there's a budget report, you talked about how teachers get paid. And how, sometimes it's easy to understand that a little better based on, if you do this type of work, this is what you get paid, this is what everybody get paid. And there are other stipends or adjustments based on the need, based on educational requirements or what education you have. Those are the masters, for example, and years of experience. People understand that they did that. And they accept it because you know what you're going to enter. And as it moves or changes, you know, it's also easy to understand. So what's pleasant to them was when they had the opportunity to do that, they did because they were losing a lot of employees to the oil patch. And when you talk about losing employees with years and years of experience, it hurts you tremendously as it relates to performance, productivity, and your ability to do the same job with the same number of employees. What they also did during that time, so they raised their salaries and wages to be competitive, to try to keep as many as people as possible. The other thing they did was they adopted the cabinet and tailrest retirement programs as an additional news, a good insurance program to try to weather you for share. And the last thing, and it served them well. Because since Eagle Ford Shield, it dissipated, and it's not as healthy, of course, as it once was, they've been able to keep employees. And now people want to work for that city. Every time they put the job on, they get tons of responses because of the benefits and the wages and salaries that they pay. The other thing they did though, during Eagle Ford Shield, was they did spend the money in terms of the increased sales taxes, property taxes. They also, as the tax values kept going up, and the tax rate should have kept going down, they weren't reducing that rate, they kept it constant with what people were paying. Because they knew where the increase in net asset valuation was coming from. It was coming from the development, which was going to potentially be temperable in nature. So what they did was they kept tax rates affordable, but they didn't keep dropping them. So that when Eagle Ford Shield went away, the tax rates were still constant, but they had banked all of that additional net asset valuation as the constant tax rate instead of dropping, dropping, dropping. So you sit on tremendous reserves. And the last thing I'll mention is that you alluded to it, you talked about it, the business and development friendly environment that is communicated from where a council, you know, stands in terms of promoting their city, has a lot to do with expanding the tax base. What's pleasant is that justice is an example. Is that also, when they're coming up with their budget, they figure out what everything, what they need. And then what it's going to cost, and what the reserves, the desired level of reserves is going to be. And then they adopt their tax rate and utility rates consistent with that. That's just the way they do it. This is what we need, this is what we... Their budgets are really, it's a planning tool throughout. And they've got capital improvements budget every year. And I know you, you wish to bolster that, they do it to some extent, it's a blended thing. But, they use it, it's just whatever we need, this is just what we're going to charge. Because this is what we need to keep going, so that you don't have lingers, it's always, it's pretty, it's steady. And that's just the way to do it, whatever it costs, this is what we're going to charge the people. Because as you know, most of what you have to pay for, aside from, of course, the salaries and wages to get the job done, is in the ground. People don't see your water system, your wastewater system, your gas system, and your drainage, and your streets. There's a huge price tag associated with that, and it's very, it's very relentless. And people don't necessarily see it all the time. But it costs you tremendously by the money. So, I applaud you for what you're trying to do, I know it's really, really hard. Because you really want to provide as much relief to the taxpayer and the taxpayers as possible. It's a tough job, I had to do it many, many years, it's really...
Any other questions?
First of all, workshop, first of all, workshop, right?
Yes.
There's one other thing that was brought up during the budget workshop process, and we didn't, it's not been addressed in this, but I want to mention it real quick. Because we've done some work on it, but we haven't gotten to a final one on it. And that was, I think, a company brought up the surcharge. I wanted to look at doing the surcharges a different way, because of course, that's how we pay for half the one volume that way. And so, we've done a little bit of work on that. The math teacher sitting up there was supposed to give us the formula to...
I almost had it.
Well, there's another thought that we have, that I just want to throw out there. Because even though we're not changing that in here, it is something we talked about, we can't talk about here. And so, as we're going forward, you guys can think about this, because we do need to address this again very soon and figure out how to give some relief to the ninety-year-old lady who's paying the same thing as McDonald's and everybody else. We have probably a quarter of our accounts that the city has, where people don't live in the city limits. And those people don't pay taxes, it's a morass system. And they're paying the same surcharge as everybody lives inside the city limits. So, a larger surcharge for people that live outside the city limits would take some of the burden off the people that live inside of the city. That's something we want. And then if we did a graduated system on the ones that are in town, based on usage or something, we may be able to get that surcharge down extremely low for the ninety-year-old lady that doesn't do very much at home. By taking some of the burden and putting it on the people that are taking advantage of the whole infrastructure account on paper.
Any other questions?
Thanks, Pete. The reason I ask the question for council is that you mentioned, you mentioned what I kind of suspected is that the salary survey that we are kind of using is literally eighty percent of the ideal situation for the employees. Most cities around us probably don't have the same kind of salaries that we would have, maybe both eighty, eighty. I mean, if we adopt the salary scale, that is what I think. It's, because I've done some, done some research, you know, and some salaries in some cities just don't make sense. You know, some are too low, some are too high. There's some things that have gone off because of how things have been handled locally. But, albeit, the key word here is ideal, this is the ideal. What everybody would love to get a base of the ideal. And eighty percent of that, eighty percent of the ideal rates, salaries, it's pretty good salary. Considering that we also incur benefits, insurance and everything else. There's a lot of the smaller cities around us, who would lose employee, many employees in smaller cities. They lose a department or, or even some of the areas they were compared to, serving, not employees, so it's safer. I don't have a problem with eighty-eight at all, it's just that I want to understood that. It is eighty percent of the ideal that most of the cities around us would like to be at, and they're not. I think we're in a pretty fortunate situation, even though, to be able to get everybody eighty percent of the ideal, even though we have to make that one hundred and eighty thousand dollar transfer, and we're still one hundred and eight thousand, so to speak, for sure. So, I mean, that's what we have to understand. We have to understand that because, you know, I've always, I've always known what I'm going to buy because I know that we have a pay grade. I'm nervous about this, writing me out, because we're projecting on version. And it's almost certain that we're going to get version, that's the situation. But it's kind of hard to just go out on a plane, so to speak, and there's a traffic desolate, so to speak, and you don't know what's going to happen, right? But I want it to be known that, and that's where the purpose of the question was. It is eighty percent of the ideal salary rates for the cities that we were compared to. Compared to cities that are around us, necessarily, Castroville is one. But the rest were, I don't know, apart from other insurance and so forth. But they have a base, they have economic base, they have the money that they can afford. And you mentioned the cities that you are familiar with, they can't afford the ideal. So they do what they can, but they become. But with that being said, that's what I, I like to make sure they understand.
And I think he did that because we wouldn't lose employees to the surrounding. They don't leave here and go to the surrounding, am I correct, you?
No, the surrounding communities pay less.
Right, right.
They pay less.
Yes, because most of our employees that we lose probably is San Antonio or other areas.
We may lose in Mount Shirts or Chapel or...
I don't know. Thank you.
Those are the cities we're concerned. But albeit, I mean, as long as we understand eighty percent of the...
I don't, thank you.
Well, so, but the cities around us are using that salary survey, they may not be included, but the cities around us are using it to try to get into Castroville's, like, one hundred percent off of their employees. But the benefits keeps coming up, I just like to have to keep stressing this. Before, well, as of right now, there are five cities in Texas that participate in retiring the system of the level two five. That's the bottom level. There's five little cities left. Dilly is paying seven-two-one for their employees to retire. And we're paying five-one-one right now. So we're paying five percent of their salary, and Dilly's paying fourteen percent of their salary on retirement. That's a huge difference. So to say that we're not going to lose to Dilly, if we go to this, that's not necessarily true. Because they only have to participate in that system for so many years and then they've bumped up to that level. Most of the cities around us are going to the seven, at least seven-one-one, if not seven-two-one. And that, I think, part of the reason that people don't, is because nobody really pays attention to retirement plans today. It's just a lot of things that I'll look at. So, every city that I've talked to provides medical insurance. A lot of the medical insurance is at a higher level than what we provide as far as medical insurance goes to. Because they don't have the number of claims to be out of here. You know, we talked about the medical insurance, but we'll see what happens in January. But let me tell you what my concern is when it comes to medical insurance. My concern is that if we continue down the road, we're on medical insurance right now. If we continue to have the amount of claims that we have against our medical insurance, we may get a period here in a year or two, but we're not sure. When your rates, when the company has your rates of one hundred thousand dollars a year, they don't have to provide insurance. They, I mean, those are the kind of things that I look at and think, you know. And so, yeah, it costs us, it costs us a little bit more to provide a lower level of insurance because of what we have, we can't change that, I mean, our employees are employees, and they didn't say they didn't say. But you know, what happens in two years, no insurance company wants insurance. Now, that's a strong possibility, at least on the number of claims. So then, we've, they were, I mean, they'll still, like, you're feeling the reality, if you would have, we need to give the employees insurance snipe, and they go away from insurance. About horrible recruiting tour, that's horrible recruiting tour in there. Unless they have spouse, have insurance, they can get on the insurance. That's every recruiting tour, it gives them more money than they want. The reality is, it's not, most of them are the ones that provide insurance to their family, they're not, they're not setting their own.
I pay eighty-twenty, I mean, eighty-twenty, my company pays twenty percent, and I have to pay the eighty percent out of my pocket. You know, and it's a big dent.
I've never, remember before was paying one hundred percent, but the reality is, in Texas, the cities all pay one hundred percent insurance. So if you're going to compare yourself to other cities, if everybody doesn't. You know, the county I pay for is seventy-five, twenty-five, the state is sixty-four. Depending on what level of income you have, it's different levels. If your low level is eighty, twenty, thirty, sixty-four. But, we're a city, the cities in Texas provide insurance. And I have a lot of cities to talk about that right now, because insurance costs, the insurance costs like life costs at one dollar. I've never seen insurance, I mean, it's rare to get the exact same insurance the next year for a cheap rate. Unless you have a bunch of really, really, really wealthy employees.
I'm glad you brought that up, because the lost history, it makes a big difference on your premium and all that. And bringing that up, where I work at, actually, they encourage all the employees to go to gyms. They pay X amount of dollars to go to the gym. They pay for you to go see the doctor on a daily, I mean, not a daily basis, but a monthly basis. They do the biomed check, you know, they want to make sure you're, and they give you incentives. You know, if you weigh X amount, and your height and weight proportionate, we'll give you X amount of dollars. If you're this, if your BMI is at a certain level, we'll give you X amount of dollars, or we'll deduct, I mean, or else, if you don't fall within those parameters, then what it is, they'll actually charge you for your health insurance. Because if you don't fall within those parameters. So, needless to say, I'm usually on a diet, because I don't, I don't fall within the parameters because of the BMI. The BMI, it's not, you know...
And those BMI parameters change almost every year, and they get less and less and less.
Exactly, exactly.
So you can win that battle.
I think you have to be at a twenty-four, forty-nine percent BMI, you know, so, you know, so...
Everybody else is obese.
Exactly.
You know, that's, I have, I have seen places where they do have, you know, it would be nice to do a health, some kind of health incentive on, if you're at a gym here. If you don't have all those things.
My company's quarter-decades.
But yeah, I absolutely agree, that's one thing that is a great place to look after incentives, is what comes to health stuff. You know, the first year with TML, I think we had, they had a day where you went, you got a gift card, you went did something or whatever you want. Sometimes the insurance companies do that, especially if you have high, high loss.
As a matter of fact, Humana, Humana has this wonderful program that, actually, we're involved with Humana, and I'm not advocating Humana or anybody, but they do have a wonderful program that they encourage all their insurers to participate. You know, they want you to be in the marathons, they want you to, you know, to do this, to do that, you know. It all goes, boils down to, of course, premium, you know. I mean, they want to keep the lowest premium, they want to give you the best rate possible. But this is the way they can control it, that if, they know that they're insured or well taken care of, then in the future, we won't have these such huge losses, you know.
All right, we know, but why we can't really talk about losses that we have, of course. So losses, there's no way to get around. I mean, they were genetic or they were... But, you know, the county blew across, they have healthcare every year, and if you went down, they sent down, they looked at your blood pressure, BMI, they did all that stuff, they took you, they did the blood work to check your blood. It was like a thirty-minute deal, you got a twenty-five-dollar gift card for a show. So every employee showed up, and you got a little four-page report, and said this is what you need to do. And those kind of things have been helpful. A lot of them showed up, just getting twenty-five-dollar gift card, then a pair of records, and, but they got something. The older they get, the more they read that report.
Any other comments?
One, I'd just like to say, you and I, I feel like you and I are on the same page with that, but I don't use the word ideal, what it says in there is the average. And that does sand off the high and the low. It takes out the high numbers, it takes out the low numbers. And then two, I did the math, that one hundred and eighty thousand, just to give you guys an idea. Remember, this is two thousand and sixteen. So, with two percent inflation, that adds another four percent to the deal. It was two thousand and sixteen, the two and sixteen survey, so it's a two-year-old. Yeah, it's a two-year-old survey. So, anyway, but if we were, if we were to know one hundred percent of that, it'd have been two hundred and twenty-five thousand. That would be forty-five thousand dollars over what we're doing. So we're, you know, again, the average makes me feel comfortable of what it is. And then the discount from those areas, which are still all within sixty, seventy miles of our city. Understand that there's got a higher tax bait, I can absolutely get that. But then that twenty percent discount, forty-five thousand dollars, gets us to a real good starting point. And that average makes me feel like this is, this is something that I can defend. You know, if the citizen says, well, what were you guys thinking, what was the formant for that? And I feel very comfortable that I can defend that, had a good equitable baseline to start. I believe it, it's the average of the ideal, yes, that's what's given. It's what we've always discussed. I'm just concerned that as we add more employees, now, probably not be able to maintain eighty percent of the ideal or five percent. I mean, we'll see, I'll get there, yes, but it certainly has been a limit to us in a way that we, I understand, you know, that position might come. So that's going to help, it's going to, it's certainly, it'll help all the way around with employees and... But, I guess we'll do, it's kind of like taking something out of credit, okay? That's what we're doing. All right, we don't have the money right now, we're going to pay for it later, that's what happens.
I don't really understand what that means.
Well, we haven't led to pay for all this right now, we had to take a transfer, right?
Yeah. And we had to take a transfer last year, three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which is almost double and cut ten positions. So, you know, we're that, if you look over the history of that transfer, that transfer's gone from seven hundred and fifty thousand to a hundred and eighty thousand in three years. So we made some stagel heavily when it comes to that transfer.
So, yeah, yeah, we've come a long ways when it comes to the transfer, and at the same time, paying off a huge debt in the gas funding.
Yeah, and I know that we've improved as far as, we have, I think it has, but we need transfers and payments gone down and so forth. But we can no longer say that that was a practice of the house in the past, we have to do ourselves. I'm just hoping that the money comes in the way we project, anticipate it will come, so that we can, you know, put those cards back.
Yeah, and I know that we've improved as far as, we have, I think it has, but we need transfers and payments gone down and so forth. But we can no longer say that that was a practice of the house in the past, we have to do ourselves. I'm just hoping that the money comes in the way we project, anticipate it will come, so that we can, you know, put those cards back.
You know, one thing I want, one thing I want you guys to remember when it comes to that transfer. The, the, the largest transfer that any of you have ever done on the council, seven hundred and fifty thousand. That was the, for those of you before I came, that was the amount of the transfer. Payment on the bond, seven hundred and fifty thousand. That sales tax payment on the bond, you basically transferred over that because it was not there. That, that money, that sales tax was there for one year, and it was there there. And the base, this, it was set up to be paid for twenty-something years that way. So you guys, you didn't, you weren't borrowing from utilities to pay your operating costs in the general fund you were borrowing, pay that debt that will give it to you. And you guys have gone from having to borrow that whole debt to just borrow a small portion of that. And so you made significant progress when it comes to getting that, 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 that liability back where the general fund where it was established, even without that extra one and a half million dollars of revenue that they had at the time that they did. I mean, that's, that's, you guys need to be proud of that, because that's a big step in, 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 in giving everything else work that financially is accountable, and it's done the way that's supposed to be done. I mean, that's, you know, like, somebody wants to come in here and make an argument about the council's still doing all terrible part now, I mean, it should have been a huge difference. There's, there's not an argument for anybody. And once this is done, you all correct, or not correct, but expand on one thing that you said, that is that we're doing this with, with the same, there's additional money coming. We don't have control of that additional money coming, the additional money will come under your control, whether you approve a pilot agreement or whether you approve an annexation based treaty. That's, that decision, not my decision, yours. And right now, that money is not coming, because pilot agreement has not been agreed to, or the annexation has not been approved. So we can't say that money is definitely coming, so that sounds like we've predetermined that that vote is going to go a certain way if we have to get that annexation vote.
Right, but we're acting with faith that it will be, it will materialize.
I have one, I have one comment. If, if this budget goes through, I mean, in, like, for next year, can, can we get, like, in order for not being a predicament that we're in right now, is it possible that these employees can get a merit raise annually instead of having to wait, you know, because of the years that they have, you know, or five years or ten years, or, I mean, just because, you know, like I said, it's, it's, it's not fair, you know, to, to, to others. And then another thing is that we need to get one of those wages in place. That way, when we do hire people, you know, they know where they're starting off at, and we don't have to argue, you know.
So, so with the approval of the, and that maybe, so for one year, that is, that is a salary. We'll put that in the personnel policy between now and the end of that. Now, when that part's done, I can actually finish the personnel policy. So it'll be established, when somebody walks in, they're going to vote, here's where you started, here's where the council approved it, here's what they said, law is right there, that's done. So we don't have to worry about that anymore. The merit evaluations, that's something the council can improve at any time if there's funding to do it. You know, there were some comments about not wanting to do merit evaluations, because it's subjective, and if one, one supervisor likes somebody else, or wants somebody else, I guess that becomes a problem.
Yeah, well, that's what I'm talking about, I mean, is there, is, is there money in somewhere in the, you know, budget to where it can be set aside for these performance, you know, performance, I call them performance plan, because that's what, that's how we give out merit raises to our employees. Yes, and, you know, I feel that because throughout the year, you know, the way we determine it is because we rate them on a quarterly base, and at that quarter base, they get that, that, we save it for them for the end of the year, and then when they pass the year, the annual evaluation, then they get that merit increase at, at the beginning of the year.
That is something the council puts in question, there's not anything in this budget set up for performance evaluations, which you can't, the council can set aside an X amount. For the county that I came from, the way that that was done was there was, you looked at the total salaries for the year, and they set what the rate was for maximum increase, whether it be two percent, three percent, whatever it was. And then we just multiplied the amount of salaries, that's calculated, because every year when we do the budget, Josie goes through every employee and does a spreadsheet on what they make, all of us, we know what the total salaries are for each position. And you just take that number, multiply by two percent or three percent or whatever, and you set that aside randomly. Because the number, I think where I came from, it was three percent, but we never set aside the full three percent, because the evaluations were done on anniversary dates, and everybody's anniversary date's not a couple of person. You know, so, so some get it longer in the year, some get it, you know, get it later in the year, whatever. But, two things about, one, the way the evaluation formed, that's part of the personnel policy here right now, the way that formed, the setup, I would agree, it's a little bit, it's a little bit too subjective. It's, it's a, I think dispersive business, rather than demonstrating skills. So part of that new personnel policy will be a new evaluation form, what it's going to be based on, it's going to be based on tasks, it's going to be based on your, your performance. And one other thing on the stipends, too, part of that policy for the stipends is going to be that without a satisfactory job performance, they're going to be, they have to have satisfactory job performance, they're not, if we have somebody coming in here and they're not doing their job, why should they get a stipend? If they do not meet satisfactory levels on the performance review, then they will be able to, their performance is satisfactory. So if they're unsatisfied with their job performance, why would we be giving them a next one? Well, in personnel policy, they're able to establish, if they're unsatisfied with their work plan, they have so much time to get back to satisfactory levels.
Again, I allude to saying, you know, I guess I have to trust the process. We have to take care of our biggest asset, cities' assets versus our employees, you know. I ever, you know, I drive the streets of Pierce Hall every day, you know, I see potholes everywhere, I see, I mean, overgrown grass, overgrown yards, I mean, you know, junk cars everywhere, and it bothers me, it really bothers me. But, you know, I, I understand, it's a, it's a process, you know. First process is step one, is try to take our, take care of our biggest assets, which are our employees, and future employees as well. But I, for the record, I just want to make sure that, you know, if we have anything, you know, offers that we need to start investing into the city as far as our streets, our, you know, our infrastructure, whatever, I mean, we have to get that, we have to get back to where we're at. And for people to feel proud to where they live, and our, our employees also to be proud, and to have pride in what they do as well. You know, because, I mean, you know, everywhere I've worked, you, I mean, you have to have pride in what you do. Otherwise, I mean, because, you know, I'm self-employed, you know, what I do is, is a direct reflection of what I do. I get paid directly for what I do, you know. And, you know, and that's what I want the employees to, to convey to the employees, that take pride in what you're, you're doing, and if we, we do accept this, this proposal, for them to be proud exactly where they're from, and where they work, you know. And, and, and to go that extra mile, they have to, you know. But like I said, I mean, you know, we have to take care of them, that's, that's for sure. But we also have to take care of our community as well, as far as the streets, I mean, because I hear that on a daily basis. I mean, you know, everybody knows where I work, so they go and visit me, and, I mean, you know, I hear it daily, you know. Sometimes it, it affects my, my, my own employment, because I have to stop what I'm doing to tend to, you know, to, to the, to the citizens, which is okay, because I signed up for that, I mean, that's why I'm here, I signed up for it. But I, I want to do something good for them as well, you know, and, and I always, I always use the, I say that, you know, I was voted in to take care, to be good stewards of the resources of the city of Pierce Hall, and I convey that again, that I, I wanted to be a good steward for the city of Pierce Hall, and make sure we invest where we need to invest, which is our employees, one. Second step would be our, our community, our streets, our, what we need to do.
Just to, just to, to address upon you guys again, you know, I mean, I know you guys get a lot of those comments, we get a lot of them here, we hear it here, and you know. We get the yell and the cussing treatment in here, you guys get people talking to you, we get, we get them, and they don't. But, you know, put it in perspective what those people talk to you. You know, remember that in 2016, we did an evaluation of our infrastructure, and the cost to fix everything in the streets was the primary cost there. The cost to fix everything was two hundred million dollars, and there was only, and that was because it was thirty years of, two hundred years of work that we used to use all the time. Deferred maintenance, everything was deferred maintenance, wastewater treatment plant was deferred maintenance, roads were deferred maintenance, everything was deferred maintenance. That was the mantra around here, always deferred maintenance, we do. And so, in 2016, you know, it wasn't a shark taking a bite out of, out of something else, it was a mouse taking a bit of the cheese with the eight point four million dollars in time to get started, I mean, that was a starting point, I mean, that was a starting point. With, you know, I mean, so, you think about two hundred million dollars that we needed to fix everything, and we had eight point four. And, you know, we stress that out, we did a lot more with that than what we thought we were going to be able to do with that. And then on top of that, you know, now we're doing the intersection project, our gas, our gas crew, we done it once, that gas system, and we talked about this in 2016, we did the law. The work that had to be done with that law, most of it wasn't sexy. It was underneath the ground, our company was going to see it, but it was necessary, and we had to get it done. And the rubber commission actors, the CCQ actors, we don't have those groups actors anymore, those groups closed, it's closed. And unfortunately, the majority of the work wasn't what everybody sees every day, it was all that other stuff underneath it, especially the gases. Well, this gas project, you guys got it right now, seventy percent of gases is branded. Of course, while our crews are going to have that money next year, we'll be almost eighty, eighty percent of the system branded. So, you know, there, so there's, there's been huge strikes taken, and I know people don't see a lot of them, but that's what you can tell them. You know, you tell them, hey, let's go wastewater treatment plant, take a look, well, let's, let's, let me show you what happened in the flesh and blood that was not about to happen in 2016.
Well, to be quite honest with you, me and my wife went to dinner, and she saw the, the intersections. Look, you see, look at that big old pothole there, I'm like, it's getting fixed.
Yeah, that's part of it.
I mean, I was like, yeah, calm down, it's getting fixed. You know, why is it like that, I said, because it's going to get fixed, you know. I mean, you know, and, and you're right, you know, a lot of the things that we've done, people have, do not see what's been doing, you know. It's, it's like the drainage project that we're going to be doing, they won't see that either.
But, you know, the intersection, I mean, that's part of the reason that we started talking about the intersection project, because that is sexy, everybody's going to see that. And the majority of the bad potholes are in the intersections, because that's where all the heavy, you know, the turnings are. You know, I mean, with what you guys did with the law budget, and then what will happen in the general fund budget next year, you get dirty those intersections. That's a lot of intersections, you know, and people are going to see that, I mean, you know, it's, you know, all that stuff, if people are going to see that, they're going to listen, they'll be like, okay, well, hey, look. Of course, they're going to say that they, they, they got it done because I went to your office and yelled at you, but, you know. By the time they're going to start to see those things, those things, and that, you know, that's going to carry over into next year as well, so they'll see that. And then we can just keep, you know, and if that's the choice we make, is, you know, after we get those done, then we go back and look and say, okay, you know, we got ten more intersections that are really bad, so next year, with that going, let's do those intersections first, and then, because there is a little bit of money in the budget every year. And hires, this year, none of them, everyone's done. And there have been a whole lot more, it's kind of a, it's a really good speed.
So if we do the, the, the third phase of the annexation, and we possibly get that pilot program, could we invest some of that to the streets as well?
I'll show you guys.
I mean, this fiscal year.
If we get it this fiscal year, and you guys make the decision, you put it all into the roads, and then say the payment for next year is going to go into the new awards. I mean, that, that's going to be five hundred and something thousand dollars, it's going to be sitting there to make whatever decision you want to make. If, if the pilot agreement goes through, we'll probably see that money right after sometime around March, we're going to have to give a little bit of time to pay it. If it doesn't go through, so we're looking at the reality of March versus October, you know, which ones are going to be. But in January, we get that big influx of property tax, we always have extra money in the general fund in January. So we could probably, if we know we're going to pay it March first, we press our check, once we get that first paycheck in there, knowing that's not now.
And what you guys need to keep in mind, that you've come a long ways from 2015, when we first came into the office, you came in in 2014, right?
Twenty fifteen, May.
May. We inherited an absolutely shambles of, of how the city was run. And you have now established a foundation for growth. You know, when we leave, we're leaving our legacy here, somebody may come in and, and just disarray everything we've done, undo everything we've done. But within your heart, you're going to say, we did the right thing, you know, we had to make tough decisions, and we had to do things that wasn't popular, but we did it, because for the most part, I think all of us here is about integrity, and not about ourselves or our kink vibes. And so, I commend you guys for the decisions you have made. Yes, I've made a couple of decisions, but for the most part, you guys have done really, really well. And you expect a lot from the employees because of how we feel and how we operate, how we work, but you got to understand, they, they're a little bit different on how they, how they're looking, they just want to be taken care of, they want to be appreciated, and not be yelled at, you know, for not doing things perfectly, because a lot of these guys were put in position, never trained, for the last two years. Think it's trying to implement training, and some of the department has, because they really never had, they were just there, because, okay, you take this job, but I don't know what to do. So they don't have that foundation, like, you went to college, you went to university, you have that training for your, for your particular field, and there, but just been OJT. But for the most part, employees, you've done a hell of a job, and I commend you for it. Don't ever hang your head down, because, don't take it personal, these guys are just, they just want the best, and it may not come across as being, it's more constructive criticism, but it's not putting you down, okay? I commend you for what you've done, because you made, you made an executive decision that I probably would have made too. Why waste my time doing this when it's not going to be useful? So don't feel bad, okay? I, I want you to hold your head up, hang your head down every night, all this night, because of what one of the councils said, but you're doing a great job. Graham, you're doing a great job. Peter, still back there? You're, you're doing an amazing job. Josie, you've definitely come in in the finance department and just kind of revamped, we understand, before, we just all, when it came to budget, I was so stressed, I didn't understand anything, now it's understandable. And I just want to say, last person, please, of course, you came in with your professionalism, you're getting our tourism off and going, you're doing a great job.
This guy, Cessia, is here?
Carrie Sallis. Leah, Leah, thank you, I'm sorry, I'm a little fatigued. You guys are all doing a great job. Is there a room? Oh, gee, oh, amazing, amazing, I mean, I'm, he's last. Amazing, I mean, you just come in and, I mean, you could have gone somewhere else with more money, that I do know. But you chose Pierce Hall because you believe in us, and I thank you for it, because it ain't, too many cities can get a graduate from, is it Harvard or Yale? Which one is it? A and M, that come here and bring his expertise. And I thank you for taking that lower salary and coming here and making the difference. And these, all together, is kind of building a foundation for success. We just got to keep people in office that, who are, their best interest is about the community and not about themselves. So, and to our city manager, who, yes, I see him turning different shades of red, because he's frustrated, but, for the most part, think you've done a really amazing job. Yes, there's always room for improvement, but you've come in here and literally transformed our city government in the two years, two and a half years you've been here, and I want to commend you for it, because it wasn't easy. You know, you got called all kinds of. You know, you got, called all kinds of names and you, but you was very, very diplomatic about the way you handled things and I commend you for that too. With that being sa- said, we need to entertain a motion to propose this workshop. Yes. Right, some motion? On the favor? Now let's move on to the next, next, this to adopt, right? 4C, discussed and considered when you come 2019, 2018? Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor? I'd like to make a comment to formally adopt ordinance 2018-094 and adopt the City of Pierceville's new annual recreation budget for the fiscal year leading October 1st, 2018, and ending September 30th, 2019.
There's a motion on the favor by Councilman Hernandez, second by Councilwoman Brenda Trevino. All in favor?
It's a, it's a roll call.
A roll call? Councilman Hernandez? Oh, you have listed Marymore?
She's in.
Yeah. Robert Luria?
Four.
Richard Tanta? Sonia Hernandez?
Four.
Brenda Trevino?
Four.
Galen Frazier?
Four.
Ben Frisco?
Four.
Julianna Hernandez?
Yes.
Motion carries on, Mrs. Hernandez. And then the motions, guys.
What comment for you, Derek? That's the, the motion process I've been through, I think, with this council. It's the first time you guys ever announced a proposal.
I want to say something, I know I asked a lot of questions, but it's important to me and everyone too.
And Crystal?
And I really appreciate all the work.
Crystal, you're amazing. I know when she goes through.
And I appreciate all you.
Roger!
Madam Mayor, I'd like to make a vote for you here.
Y'all come back down here.